All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local channel access eight and through the town website at www.eastham-ma.gov. So we'll start with public and select board information. We'll start with the select board first. Jerry?
You know, I recently, there was a article in the Boston Globe about a corporate LLC purchasing land in Nantucket, building a house and renting it on a short-term rental for $100,000 a week. And I just wanted to commend Jackie and her staff to the zoning task force. And particularly here to my better angels Suzanne, Jamie, and Amy, who really pushed hard for that zoning change that I think is very important as we see it happening right next door. So, thank you to all of you.
Thank you. Jamie?
Yes. So I have some good information. So the transfer station is now open on Fridays, right? Until through?
Labor Day.
Labor Day?
As long as we can.
Wow, so thank you to the staff for making that happen because we're all, you know, working extremely hard this time of year and that's a testament to the staff here, so thank you. Second, not-so-great news. So it has come out that the transfer fee from the housing bill has not been added back to the housing bill. The Senate did pass the housing bill with some great beneficial items in it, but it does not have the transfer fee included. The transfer fee was something that I think a lot of seasonal communities were highly advocating for because it was one of the first moves that we were, not, maybe not the first, but like definitely the, one of the first moves that we were seeing from the state, offering opt-in programs to seasonal communities that would allow us to really target some of this high-end house purchasing that's happening as we're getting into the hundreds of thousands of dollars rentals and multimillion-dollar second homes. These are things that are creating scenarios that we've never seen before and the transfer fee would really allow us to target that stream and use some of that money to truly offset the impact that it's having on the community. And so I was also hoping that maybe we might be able to entertain that as a future agenda item to get on as a, to get on the warrant for this next year.
Home rule petition.
Home petition, yeah.
It'll be the first thing on our town meeting board now.
Honored.
All right, anything else from the board? All right, any public information from the public that's not on the agenda? Scott, you have something?
Yes.
Our illustrious moderator?
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to bring you up to speed. As the town moderator, I have the three appointments to the finance committee amongst a couple of other committees in town. And due to a resignation, a spot opened up with Russ French resigned. So with consultation with Mary Shaw, who's over there, and the search committee in the position to appoint Fred Guti to fill out the balance of Russ's term. And then, obviously, if he's still interested, you know, a year from now, then we can just put him into a full term. But, so that's being made. And if anyone has any questions, fantastic resume experience, has served the town before, so I think he was on the finance committee for a number of years and turned off.
For a long time.
So, yeah, so it'd be good to have him back in the fold and I think it'll go through the process in the next couple of days where Mary will reach out and welcome him, right, Mary? Mary says she will do that and then he'll get him into Linda's office to get appropriately signed up. So should be good to go. That will keep me, all of the appointments through the moderator will be filled, so unless there's something that comes up or that I haven't been made aware of, my, all my appointments are set to go. So thank you to all of you. And if anybody has any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, have a nice night, everyone.
All right, you too. All right, well, on appointments, we have Jim Fitzgerald from Environmental Partners is going to talk to us about some Route 6 updates. Exciting stuff.
It is, it is. Thank you very much again. My name's Jim Fitzgerald with Environmental Partners, and nice seeing all of you. We are, what I'm here tonight to present is on the Route 6 corridor improvements, provide you updates. A lot of this presentation you've seen before, but there's been some advancements having to do with the concepts that we were considering. So at this point, we have been here a couple, few times before, done different iterations of analysis. We have met with Mass DOT preliminarily, as well as police and fire. We made some refinements to our concepts based on, based on those conversations, and here we are again. So next steps, what we're looking to advance towards is meeting next with Mass DOT with what the town's preferred concept is in order to learn what next steps there would be. Incorporate any refinements, then advance into the tip process, transportation improvement program through the project initiation phase where you, that you provide information on the project, as well as advancing it from there into the design phase. The pre-25% would be the first of the more major submissions, which would also in turn have to be funded and discussed between Mass DOT and the town. So I'm going to go relatively briefly through this background. You've seen this before, happy to go into more detail if you'd like, but just in summary, we're looking at all six miles of Route 6 in the town of Eastham, and we're looking to really change driver behavior a little bit. We want to provide accommodations that are comfortable for all motorists, not just, all modes of transportation, not just motorists, but bicycles and pedestrians as well. We want to reduce travel speeds along Route 6, but we want to keep them at an appropriate level, that the right traffic stays on Route 6 and doesn't seek alternate routes than more than it already does today. And we certainly want to maintain emergency access along the corridor as well as provide a nice connection to the potential redevelopment along Route 6. Providing safe, convenient, and comfortable accommodations for all modes of transportation, no matter what they are. We have done a fair amount of evaluations, looking at identifying key signalized and unsignalized intersections, looking at old data sources, as well as collecting our own traffic data. And the one thing that became apparent is that the traffic volumes along the corridor decrease the further north you go. So as you can see in this graphic, on the left, to the south is Orleans, and to the top of the slide, or the north is Wellfleet. Traffic volumes closest to Wellfleet are substantially lower than they are down in Orleans. Meanwhile, the Route 6 corridor is one lane each direction, and Wellfleet widens out pretty quickly right into Eastham into two lanes in each direction for that four-lane cross-section. Ironically enough, the closer you get down to Orleans with the traffic volumes of the highest, we're down to a three-lane cross-section. It's one lane in several directions. So we're looking at how to improve the efficiency in this corridor. And one thing that we know is left-turn vehicles are a challenge with a four-lane corridor, which most of Route 6 in Eastham is. So for those motorists looking to turn left off of Route 6, onto a side street or driveway, it just kind of, it messes up the flow of traffic along that roadway and causes people to, having to hit the brakes relatively quickly. Likewise, challenging for motorists to turn left from side streets or driveways onto Route 6, given the number of travel lanes and the travel speeds being experienced along the corridor. When we look at bike and pet accommodations, they're pretty inconsistent, really no real bicycle accommodations. There are some pedestrian accommodations, albeit uncomfortable. It's not really lending itself to a comfortable accessway for pedestrians and bikes. Fortunately, we have Cape Cod Railroad Trail that does parallel through Route 6. Just a very vehicle-centric roadway, having so many lanes of travel, although you do have some pretty brave pedestrians and bikers along the corridor. And, but really, you can, as motorists drive around a bicycle in the roadway, you fear for them. You know, I experienced it on my way here again today. You know, it's less than ideal. We certainly want to, as I mentioned before, make sure that we keep an eye on operations when we talk about our alternatives, making sure that we keep the right traffic on the right roadways and with reasonable operations at these key intersections. And looking at the, at the intersections along the corridor, you know, we have identified some locations that experienced more traffic, more crashes than we would like, including in this northern portion of Route 6, where we have a fair amount of total crashes along the corridor from McRoy all the way northerly to Wellfleet. So, alternatives. So in looking at the traffic volumes, again, the traffic volumes on the northern segment of Route 6 are the lightest, at about 23,000 vehicles per day, or at least they were a year, two years ago, when we did our counts. In looking at alternatives, we have a number of considerations to keep in mind. Certainly, the amount of space, the amount of right-of-way width we have to play with is a consideration, as well as the access into all the side streets and driveways along the corridor. Wanting to make sure that we maintain some, maintain access with whatever we come up with, that there are opportunities to perhaps reverse direction or just with minimal increase and inconvenience. And certainly wanting to make sure that there's comfortable accommodations, again, for those pedestrians and bicyclists. So focusing in on the section of roadway, which it carries the least amount of traffic, this is from Brackett Road up northerly to the Wellfleet line. We considered, are considering, a road diet, which is a way of reducing the number of travel lanes. Again, Wellfleet, Route 6 and Wellfleet consists of one lane each direction. It just changes all the way to two lanes in each direction as you go into, into Eastham. So in looking at what a road diet could, could be, there are many different configurations, but what it really does is it has one, one lane of traffic in each direction that remains open without interruption from left-turn vehicles, which currently exist today, but uses that excess space that's gained for other uses. And there are all sorts of different configurations and types of road diets that we can consider. It also reduces travel speeds along the roadway. The feeling of a little bit of a narrower roadway helps to reduce travel speeds a bit. Operations has to be performed to make sure that we're maintaining operations along the corridor and that it's a good fit for a road diet. You know, where, where traffic volumes are the highest, namely down in the mid and southern portions of Route 6. We are not talking about a road diet, this is just on the northernmost portion. So, you know, this video was taken in the summer a year ago, and, you know, if you were to envision this as one lane each direction, you can see that there, there's a fair amount of gaps in, along the corridor to consider a road diet. Of course, every road is different, I'm sorry, every day is different, certainly a cloudy day when a lot of vehicles are trying to access Provincetown could be more compact than this. So what we have here are the alternatives that we have considered, and these are things that we have, again, spoken with the police and fire departments about, as well as other town officials. So this first consideration is looking at one lane each direction and providing some sort of a median island in the middle that is mountable. So this is more of a visual separation between traffic. There would be some grade difference, but, but fully mountable. But having some sort of change in texture, change in colored pavement would lend itself to that feeling of it being a traditional median island, and again, kind of separating traffic with this physical change versus a more, more of a barrier approach where we have a traditional raised median island. That could be green space, street trees, things like that, that physically prevent any sort of motorist from traveling over that island, although there would be breaks and whatever treatment that is ultimately proposed at key locations. So when we talk about, you know, the trade-offs, we certainly want to make sure, no matter what alternative is advanced, that we maintain access for emergency vehicles. If there is a, an emergency and a fire truck, for instance, is trying to get around vehicles that are in the roadway, we want to make sure that there's enough room for those vehicles to pull over and that fire truck to scoot around them. So that would be important, to make sure that each roadbed is plenty wide enough for that accommodation. Or if a vehicle is broken down on the side of the road, other vehicles obviously have to get around them. We do not want to create a traffic jam, we just want things to flow smoothly. In the event that there is a more catastrophic kind of crash and, you know, we actually have to close one of the roadbeds for, say, a flipped-over vehicle on the side, in the case of this graphic, and, and a fire truck to get alongside them, then, you know, we need that kind of flexibility to allow for two-directional traffic also on one, the others, the other roadbed. And that's what this is basically showing. So with the top scenario, if it's a mountable island, those vehicles that have to travel to the other side, the other roadbed would be able to do so with police assistance, of course, but over the mountable median island. The scenario on the bottom would require that there be somewhat frequent breaks and that raised median island to allow for this sort of scenario to play out. You know, so these are all things that we would take into consideration as we advance into, into the design. So we identified two alternatives, alternative A and alternative B, in, along the roadway. Alternative A includes the raised, more areas of raised median island, where you would have this greenscape in the center of the roadway, although it would be more restrictive for emergencies and things like that. We would certainly require breaks, somewhat frequent breaks in the median island. If you look on the left side of the screen, you can see those, those red dashes, if you will. Those could be potential spots where breaks in the median island would take place to accommodate emergency access. So it'd be kind of a combination of the raised treatment with, with some of the mountable treatment as well. So this was one of the alternatives that we had identified. Alternative B is a little bit more of a combination of the two, though. So if you look on the left side of the screen, the areas that are in green, namely adjacent to the potential town redevelopment on the east side of Route 6, that area could have that raised treatment to really highlight this section as special. As you travel along Route 6, there could be some sort of gateway treatments that really sets this location off nicely with the street trees in the center of the roadway. But just outside of that stretch could be the, that mountable treatment. The, the, the mountable median island that's shown on the top side of the slide here, that's the areas denoted in the, in the map as the red lines. So this, and this alternative was identified as the preferred alternative during our meeting with the, the police and fire departments. The combination of the two treatments seemed to be more supported, or supported in this instance, to maintain that emergency access.
One, one question, the, the gray there, there are two of them, one at Brackett, one at Aspen, is it?
Yeah, that's the Endenosset Road, too.
The Endenosset Road.
Yes.
What is, what do those represent? What does the gray represent?
So, so it really depends on, as we get further into the design, how much space we have for all of it. So when we talk about median islands, especially something that might include a street trees, you want to have a minimum width. So it, as we get further along in the design, I think we would be identifying what would go in there. Do we have room for, for an island, or is it turning lanes to turn left? Because again, with the road diet scenario, we want those left-turn maneuvers to take place outside of that, that stream of traffic.
Right.
And that's a whole, that's a whole nice thing about a road diet. In a lot of instances, you automatically think, well, four lanes of traffic, traffic must be better. It is until you have that one vehicle stopped in that left lane, blocking things, and now you've got vehicles merging in, cutting in front of other vehicles, or hitting the brakes, and, you know, lends itself to a few.
Under, very much understood.
Yeah. So I guess to answer your question, to be determined what those gray, gray dashes would So I, this is, again, a graphic that you've seen before. This is what the Brackett Road intersection might look like. We've performed analysis that has, has kind of come, come up with preliminary analysis that has come, has come up with some borderline results that would require Mass DOT's input, which they will certainly have an opinion on. So there's one of two scenarios, whether or not we have a somewhat narrower cross-section as we have shown in this, this instance, or if Mass DOT is going to require us to start the road diet just a little bit north of, of the Brackett Road intersection. It all really depends on the analysis and the fine-tuned details, which, moving forward, there would likely, we will need to have updated traffic counts. Mass DOT wants to see pretty recent data as the basis of the design and things like that. So these are all things to be ironed out.
And Jim, that's an intersection where if someone's taking a left turn, or someone's trying to take a right turn, traffic backs up.
Yes.
So a right turn only lane would also be excellent there.
Sure.
If there's any space to do it.
Absolutely.
Because that would make one lane flowing.
Right.
Yes, yes, that would definitely be.
We have no flow through that area.
I think that's what he's got there, he's got a left turn.
Yep.
Just straight through, and then a right turn or straight through.
Yeah.
On the, there's three there. It's a little hard to see it.
Yes, yeah, so there's, there are three lane approaches in northbound and southbound Route 6.
Yeah, just going north. Coming south is just two.
Right. And the other dynamic of this is what takes place in the potential redevelopment and how that aligns on that northeast corner of Route 6 and Brackett. Because you can see that there are left-turn arrows into that area. So we want to make sure that as these details get ironed out, that traffic is able to funnel in accordingly and to turn into whatever may be there, if there is something there, without coming up the works.
Right.
So.
Maybe we make them come back to Brackett.
And, and we're keeping, we're keeping the two lanes for now up to Brackett?
That's the potential suggestion.
Okay. I mean, I don't mind doing the corridor.
No, it has, they actually have three there. Well, two before that, and then three at the intersection. Yeah, exactly.
Oh, no, no, they're, I think it's either alternative A or B up to Brackett.
No.
No?
That's beyond Brackett.
Oh, that was just beyond, yeah.
Oh, so it would stay two-lane.
It's, it's the northern, it's the, it's from Brackett to Wellfleet that we're talking about, the road diet. So it would be one lane in each direction.
Oh, I was thinking of the whole thing.
But when we get to a traffic signal, you know, with traffic signal analysis, things change a little bit because you've got that red duration where, you know, southbound Route 6 will be facing a red light. And so we may need that second lane there, depending on the final results of the analysis and Mass DOT's input. So that's why that, if we had to do that, it would be just like within the vicinity of the Brackett intersection.
And, and south is more challenging because we don't have the space, the width of the right-of-way.
To do the left turn, yeah.
Yeah. It's really, as it gets narrower and narrower towards Orleans, we have the wetland.
Yeah, you can't, yeah, in someone's yard.
The cove and the wetland.
It's disappearing.
Very squishy.
Yeah.
Could I ask a quick question?
Of course.
Did, I don't know if our first responders or police had an opinion on the alternative A or B?
They liked it, they liked B.
They liked B.
The one with the.
Yeah, so did I, okay.
Yeah, because it allows more flexibility, sorry, more flexibility if there was a.
An emergency.
An emergency, correct.
And also, I feel like it offers better visibility and it's easier to maintain, I would think, also.
Yeah, it's just not all trees or.
Right. Yeah, I think sometimes visibility is important, even if someone like randomly decides to cross six there and just darts out, or, you know, there's.
And we can still set off that from Brackett to the Wellfleet line. We can still set that off with trees and the border on the sides.
Yeah, definitely trees on the sides, but just, yeah, in the middle, keeping it.
But that would make a huge difference. Would you think, just see seas of pavement now, you'd see some green stuff.
Yeah, that would be lovely.
Absolutely.
And the curb cuts, I think, would be much clearer if we had a sidewalk in the.
Right.
Correct.
Can I also ask a question while we're here?
Sure.
Places that have the mountable, it's helpful that it changes in texture and color, how often do people just?
Drive through.
Yeah, I just, you know.
That's, that's, yeah, that's, that's a good point. So I would say that the detail would need to be ironed out, but it, we would want something that wasn't totally flush, like it would have some sort of a sloped edging treatment that you could drive over, but you.
Really don't want to.
Really don't want to, but you could in an emergency, and the degree of which would have to be ironed out with the different, you know, police and fire.
You know, if you did it slowly.
But could there, that one thing to watch out for would be those violations, because again, the notion here is that you're not supposed to drive through this median island. So turning left onto Route 6, for instance, in that vicinity, we don't want you driving over this, this median island.
I think we've all seen someone do it on Suicide Alley.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
I guess my, I imagine someone being like, I'm just gonna make a U-turn right here, or I'm gonna pass somebody.
Oh, God, yeah.
I don't, I don't think you would want to pass over it. I would think that that would be.
That would be pretty bold.
That would be very bold, I would, I would think. But, but I'm not.
I'm sure someone will, but.
Probably not as good.
Never say never.
And no matter what we do, it's gonna be better than Suicide Alley, because you have miles between exits there.
And it's gonna be better than what it is now.
Where you don't have miles, you have, it's, we're talking about feet.
Yeah.
No, this is, this is great.
Just a quick thing. So making a left turn will be in prescribed spots because you're not supposed to drive over this median, this mountable median.
Right.
So there would be fewer places to make a left-hand turn. So are there gonna be more traffic lights, or how do you do that?
Good question. I actually have a slide on that coming up. But there are different opportunities to be able to, through jug handles and things, things like that, to be able to.
Which take more, more, more land, though, that's the problem.
Sure. There are some, some existing opportunities that we have as well.
Okay.
But could there be some impacts to land? Yes, there could be some isolated spots. So again, that would be definitely an important consideration.
But we at least have a nice wide layout during, during, in this patch.
Yes, yes.
Would, would we be changing any curb cuts? In other words, closing some and so forth, is that part, potentially part of the plan?
That, that would, that would be something that we would want to look at, is making sure that there are reasonable curb cuts there now, or there would be reasonable curb cuts moving forward, I should say.
Right.
You know, we don't want a curb cut where a tractor trailer can pull a U-turn in the, you know.
I understand.
We need reasonable curb cuts, and, and also this being Mass DOT work, road, and the likelihood of it going through, say, the tip perhaps, lends itself to Mass DOT's input into the process, and they, they too would want safe, safe curb cuts, which also supports your, your idea, or your, your desire for improved pedestrian and bicycle accommodations, right? So that they're delineated, you don't feel as if you're taking your life in your own hands, just crossing a driveway apron that goes forever, you know?
Correct.
Like the Teacham parking lot.
Teacham, yeah, well, you have one right there at Brackett going into Cumberland, it is right, you don't know who's, whether to turn in the Brackett or to turn into Cumberland Farms.
Delineation is a good thing, for motorists to know where they're supposed to go, bicyclists and pedestrians to know where they're supposed to go.
Thanks.
Looking at the rest of the corridor, where we are dealing with heavier traffic volumes, where we would be maintaining two lanes in each direction instead of just the one lane in each direction, we would also want to be looking at the opportunities for treatments for bikes and pedestrians as well. So Jackie, you had mentioned the trees, I believe. So this graphic kind of shows what the desire would be to fit street trees into, into the mix, providing some sort of separation between the motorists and the pedestrian and/or bike.
That would be nice.
Much different than what's there today, where you're right alongside the. Much different than what's there today where you're right alongside the vehicle flying by you, provides a little bit of protection and separation from you. So, what we have shown here on the left would be a sidewalk perhaps on one side. It's shown on the left. On the right side, it would be a shared-use path, at least that's what these graphics are depicting, where the bikes and the pedestrians are sharing the space, northbound or southbound. And certainly, if the vehicle- the fire trucks can get around a broken-down vehicle on the side of the road with one lane each direction, they certainly will be able to do so with two lanes in each direction as well. So, this gets into that section of the roadway where we have two lanes in each direction. Again, you can see that there are places here where we have the red dashes that depict opportunities that we would have this flush median island, in alternative A that is, where if there was to be an emergency, that a motorist would be able to get from one side of the road to the other to have two-directional traffic on the other side if that need existed. In other areas, we have more of those gray dashes where, you know, the need would be to be determined, whether it be, say, a left turn, an exclusive left turn lane, or is it a flush median island? Again, those are things that we would consider. But as you can see, there would be regular breaks of some sort in this raised median island with the vertical granite curbing and the street trees. So, again, alternative A.
And we have room for all that?
Not everywhere.
Yes. There is. We did take a look at places where we can actually fit it, though, because the biggest difference between this and what we have under existing conditions are places where- those three spots where you see the trees in this graphic, right? So, the green buffer between sidewalk and roadway or shared-use path and roadway, and then that green landscaped median island down the middle. So, those widths would vary depending on where we are dealing with. There are places where the right-of-way is wider than other places. There may be some places where, you know, we would entertain, is it worth a strip easement, permanent easement or land-taking, or do we avoid it by tightening things up again, you know? And those trade-offs would have to be evaluated at that stage. Alternative B, again, the preferred, with police and fire and the others on the call a couple of months ago, has a different kind of approach where we really highlight directly in front of here. The- with a landscaped raised median island directly out front, setting this location off and elsewhere having that flush median island with that same kind of textured treatment as we were talking about in the northern section of town.
Around the windmill green.
That's good, yeah. That makes sense.
Right. Would you have room for a left-hand turn on the Sammaset there?
Yes, yes. Certainly, there would be- I guess this graphic does not show the gray dashes, but yes, there would be- there would also be left turn opportunities throughout. Yeah, definitely.
But that wouldn't be a big distance either. We're not talking about-
No, it would be just at isolated locations. Make sure that we have that capability for left turns on the side streets, key driveways, as well as those U-turn opportunities as well. So, in these areas where we don't, where we are unable to have a road diet, so like, for instance, here we're looking at Massasoit, we are suggesting that a consideration for easier left turn maneuvers onto and off of Massasoit by having a channelized left turn lane that is a little- feels a little bit protected from the oncoming traffic so that you're able to make that left turn maneuver without getting rear-ended. And likewise, turning left from Massasoit Road, something that could be considered would be to keep that- extend that fifth lane, that center lane of Route 6, open for a bit in that northbound direction. It's a left turn lane, and then it just continues a little bit further. So, turning left from Massasoit, you would have a place where you could transition onto traffic, crossing the southbound traffic, having a place of refuge in the center of the roadway before merging into the northbound street traffic.
Can you blow that up a little bit? Is that possible?
I don't know if I- I don't think I can, actually.
Because it is hard to see that. But I see what you're talking about, because you can tell that northern one where it does- it starts out really narrow and then widens.
Yes, right.
So, they would be able to merge then.
Correct. Yeah, so you see that the exclusive left turn lane, that white left arrow on the northbound side of Route 6. So, you see that white mark in the center?
Yep.
In the center lane. So, just to the north of that, if you had a more zoomed-in version, you- actually, maybe we can do that. But if you look real close, you could see that that extra lane continues before merging into the right two travel lanes. I can also provide you with a close-up copy of this as well, no problem, and this whole presentation as well.
Was there any thought about maybe some- a light there, having a traffic light?
I don't believe that the traffic signal warrants would be met at that location. So, in order to put in a traffic signal, there are traffic signal warrants to consider. We did look at, maybe one or two presentations ago, we had entertained the notion that was being discussed about potentially a roundabout at that location. There was some conversation about that. Operations aside, one of the fears that we had by putting a roundabout at that location was its impact in promoting more traffic to use Massasoit as a cut-through. You're kind of creating this gateway of, "Oh, what's this road? Well, maybe I'll go down here," you know? You know, and that's one thing that we were concerned about, aside from the operational side of things as well. So, ah, here we are. So, here's just a kind of a blown-up shot of what might look like here in front of town offices. So, we certainly want to make sure that there's that open area in front of emergency, providing emergency access. Here, we have it shown as red. It may not- in this instance, this red median island that's shown would probably be actually totally flush and smooth. So, we would not want any bump. We want emergency vehicles to be able to come in and out. But again, this is just what that might look like with a sidewalk on the western side and a shared-use path on the eastern side. As you can see here, there is a limitation having to do with right-of-way. So, that's why on the western side, there is no grass strip or trees there, but anything could be done with- if we were to acquire that land.
What about- Just curious, if you're coming from the north and you wanna go into Town Hall, how would you get in there?
That's like half the town.
Yeah, that is a good point.
And it's currently a nightmare.
Yeah. So, what we would do, actually, that- thank you for pointing that out. What we would be doing is we would be realigning, adding a third lane to be directly opposite the northbound left turn lane. Yes, that should be fixed. So, we would be able to do that with the signals, although it is offset, so that's a challenge.
Yeah, I know years ago when we had someone in from, I think, the commission, he thought maybe putting the stop line when you're headed north before the Town Hall parking lot.
Yeah, push it down, yeah.
And that way, when you turned in, you had your own dedicated, you know, lane to turn into Town Hall.
You might be able to do something like that. I would probably try shifting that approach northerly as much as I could towards the intersection, because having expansive distance between stop lines is less than ideal. But I think that that's probably- something along those lines would work. And the left turn lane, because we had that northbound left turn lane, the two left turn lanes would basically be opposite one each other when you're looking at the alignment.
Right.
So, we've got the room to fit it in. It would be just a little bit less of a bulb of green space. But, yeah, to your point, yes, that would definitely be something that would have to be added in. So, looking at the southernmost portion, you know, I understand that MAST D O T is doing some work down at the Rotary in Orleans, but these sketches merely maintain what you have there today, that one lane, southbound approaching the Rotary as opposed to widening it out to continue the two lanes, which makes more sense. But certainly, anything could be done with more land, right? The reason it's not like that is the land. So, that would certainly be worthwhile looking into. So, to the question raised earlier having to do with, okay, how do these vehicles turn around? We would try to identify places that vehicles could turn in their own space, turn left without impacting motorists behind them, so they're able to do so in a safe and efficient manner. Some of these things, some of these jug handle treatments would require some impacts to adjacent parcels. Please don't read into these locations. These are just kind of preliminary thoughts. But again, yes, that would require some land-taking. Some of the places that we've identified would be less invasive than this. So, here's one at the northern Nauset leg where we have a signal. We could provide a similar treatment. Yes, there would be- we would be nicking the corner of that property to a lesser degree than the previous locations that we were just looking at, so that a motorist, if they were heading northbound and wanting to reverse direction, would get in that rightmost lane, turn right from Route 6 onto Nauset Road, left onto Nauset, and then left at the traffic signal. Here are some other locations where, you know, the existing facilities might lend themselves to U-turn opportunities that would have to be ironed out.
Captain's Court.
Corner Prince.
Yeah. We see a lot of potential for Eastham Flower Island to expand their gardens.
So, the change direction at Governor Prince, you would still then need to cross the two lanes of traffic.
To turn left.
But you'd be in a dedicated left turn lane at least.
You'd be in a left turn lane.
You will get rerun.
Wouldn't be high-speed coming behind you.
And the visibility is better, I think.
Yeah, so, it won't be as scary as today.
Jim, if may I ask, what's the- generally, for a roundabout versus a jug handle, is it a similar amount of space needed? So, I know you don't want a roundabout at, like, say, Massasoit, but could you have a roundabout with just two directions, just for the purposes of turning around?
I suppose you could. My concern would have to be what the operations would be on a roundabout during the peak times. So, you're saying a roundabout just merely to reverse direction? The- I would question the safety of that idea from the standpoint that roundabouts traditionally have somewhat balanced traffic volumes between each of the legs. So, if you're looking at a three-way or four-legged intersection, you want them to have somewhat balanced operate- volumes so that when- as motorists come in, that they have a gap to enter into the circle in some reasonable- to some reasonable degree. If you were to just have a roundabout in the center of Route 6, you'd have to come up with a way for that one motorist who's looking to reverse direction to be able to break into all those- all that through traffic that's continuing along Route 6. So, that would have to be thought out. You know what I'm saying?
It'd seem like if you had four lanes, that perhaps the left lane could be the one going into the roundabout, and then you have a travel lane that goes through it type of thing, in and out.
Yeah. I'd have to think about that a little bit more from the standpoint of that one motorist trying to make his way, his or her way through and reverse direction against all those other motorists that are continuing along their way. So, that's something we can consider. Okay, so as far as bike and pet accommodations, so we looked at the notion of, well, the first one was sidewalks with separated bike lanes, where the separated bike lanes could be one-directional, you know? So, either northbound on the north side of the road or southbound on the southbound side, with separate spaces for the pedestrians. So, the bikes and the pedestrians are totally separate from one another. Or there are also two-directional separated bike lanes. Again, these are the bikes separated from the pedestrians altogether. So, you could have northbound, southbound, right next to each other for the bikes, some sort of buffer before, and then separating the bikes with a little buffer to the pedestrians on one side and with a buffer separating them from the motors on the other side. When looking at bike accommodations, we also have to consider, how do they get there? How do they get to each side of the roadway? So, the bikes would have to travel in whatever direction we're designing for. So, in the top scenario, if the bike is approaching from that side, then they have to go in that direction. They would not be able to go the other way, you know what I mean? So, that's something that we have to watch out for. Then, the other idea that I had mentioned earlier was the shared-use path, where the bikes and pedestrians are sharing the space. As you can see in this graphic, it takes up a little less real estate to do a shared-use path and having them share the space. Each alternatives comes with pros and cons. I think the biggest con for the other alternatives is really the space that it takes up is kind of a challenge. And this is just what a shared-use path looks like on the right. So, when talking about bike-pet accommodations, fortunately, we have the Cape Cod Rail Trail, which is an awesome asset. So, right now, the way that we were looking at it, as we've discussed before, Cape Cod Rail Trail really accommodates the eastern side of town, north of Nauset Road, like, or north of where it crosses under Route 6. So, because the Cape Cod Rail Trail is on the east side, on the northern half of Route 6, that side really benefits from having the Cape Cod Rail Trail when it comes to bike and pet access. The opposite exists on the southern half of town where the Cape Cod Rail Trail is on the western side of Route 6. So, bikes and pedestrians can access that Cape Cod Rail Trail real easily. It's those other quadrants, those other two quadrants, that kind of have a challenge, that they don't really have accommodations for, especially for comfortable bike accommodations. So, what we were considering was if we were to do a shared-use path, for instance, and if right-of-way is a constraint, which we know it is, we could provide that on the other side of Route 6, to provide that other side that's currently not being served with bike and pedestrian accommodations, put it on that side of the road to handle those other quadrants of the town. So, now, it's a little bit more balanced when it comes to bike and pedestrian accommodations on all four quadrants, if you're looking at this map on the left side. So, how would they get from one side to the other? Well, fortunately, we have the Cape Cod Rail Trail and the tunnel that could also be accessed for switching from our shared-use path, say, on the northern side of town, that would be on the west of- western side of Route 6, to on the southern side, being on the eastern side of Route 6. So, we have taken a look at right-of-way, assuming these cross-sections that you see here on the right. So, again, the- within that yellow oval would be a road diet, one lane each direction for motorists. Let's say that we included a- Let's say that we included a shared-use path on the western side of the road, and let's say that there's a sidewalk on the eastern side of the road, and we would include some sort of tree buffer on either side. Within the blue oval, we're maintaining four lanes of traffic, two lanes in each direction, right? If, we get a little tighter in this area, okay? So, we might be able to fit in one grass buffer, maybe between the shared-use path that's on the eastern side of the road and the roadway itself, but not on the other side, not on the western side. And, within the purple area, a very similar scenario as within the blue, except, again, it's only a three-lane cross-section, not a four-lane cross-section. If we were to assume those three cross-sections in those three different areas, the dots on the map on the left depict where we have adequate right-of-way or where we have inadequate right-of-way. The adequate right-of-way is the green, the green little dashes, and the red denotes the places that we do not have enough right-of-way for that, for that scenario. It just kind of gives you an idea of what we have for right-of-way along the entire six-mile corridor. So, in those areas where we have those red dashes, what would we do? Well, either we would consider sacrificing some of the green buffer, maybe narrowing the median island, maybe, or if you wanted to keep those features, maybe it's a sliver taking. We're not anticipating tremendous amount of land takings, but it's really a, you know, will we have some impacts or won't we kind of evaluation? So, that's something to consider. And certainly, this project would have to be phased out. I mean, it's six miles of highway. It's tremendously long for a single project, especially if you're going to be considered on the tip. So, I think, in our mind, I think we're, for us at least, we're thinking that northern yellow oval area, where you're talking about the road diet directly in front of the anticipated developments, et cetera, would be a great starting point for these sorts of accommodations. So, how much would that Phase 1 cost for construction? There are so many variables that still have to, that still have to be answered, really. But Alternative A would be about $16.7 million that we would be asking the state to assist and handle, versus if you did Alternative B, which is the preferred, it's a little bit more, it's $17.4 million. It really depends on what the...
Will you go back to A again, real quick?
Sure.
Oh, no. What machine hasn't been turned off?
We're not sure.
Oh.
Yep, there we go.
Sorry, I didn't see that was on there.
Okay, so, Alternative B just costs a little bit more because we would be doing two different things.
You know what it is? It really depends on what that treatment is in the center of that center, that red area. What is it? Is it an ornamental pavement? Some of those ornamental pavements can be pricey.
Yeah.
So, again, there are a lot of variables here, but they're pretty close in price, relatively speaking, but still, it might be a little bit more on the other. So...
And this will be, hopefully, in part paid for by the state?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, the majority.
We have never been a TIP project, as town to be stamped, that I can, that we could find.
Right.
So, we would definitely have priority if we can get the design done. So, it has to be a 14% complete design. They say 25%, but it's really not.
So, the way that it goes is that the, I think that next meeting with MAST DOT, which is, which really is our pivotal step, I think that's going to be very telling. And I think that the, we won't really know what's going to happen until we get to that meeting, obviously, but it's possible, likely, that they will want, at least through the 20, the town to assist with the design, at least through the 25%. And then, you know, this being state highway, would they be, would the state be willing to take on the next step after that? Again, this is all things that, these are all things that we were discussing with them. And so, the 25% submission includes the, they added a new submission, so pre-25 and the 25, so, just what we needed. So, that would all be kind of part of that process.
But that's design, not, like, that was construction cost that you showed.
These are just construction costs.
Right, okay.
Design costs aren't cheap either.
No.
Yeah, because MAST DOT's process is so rigorous and very different than a, say, a municipal design, it's very regimented and a lot of hoops to jump through. On average, I think the 14% you were referring to, on average, typically, design for a TIP project tends to be, general rule of thumb, around 14% of construction. Of course, the higher the price of that construction, the lower that percentage goes to. So, it really, it depends. It's something we would just have to price out, but that's just kind of a general rule of thumb for kind of smaller projects.
Now, it's, you say it's state highway, but technically, it's US 6. It's a federal road. Is there any extra money that we could get through federal?
That's a good question. That's a good question, but we should definitely ask.
Yeah. Several years ago, we were in Washington, just on vacation, and we got in to see, it was the staff of Senator Warren's office, and I mentioned all this to him.
Yes.
This was 15 years ago. And they said, absolutely, let us know if, you know, this is something that's looking like it's going to happen, you get to that point, then we might, there might be federal money that we could tap into, so...
Right. And I think that this project is, aside from Phase 1, looking at the entire six miles in Eastham, is, it's pretty sizable. But it also could change, could be extended northerly as well. I mean, the accommodations for bicycles and pedestrians in Wellfleet are not, you know, they're kind of in the same boat, right? So, I'm hoping...
Except they only have the one lane already.
Yeah, I'm hoping that this kind of notion of protected bike and pedestrian accommodations could extend further north, because that's more in keeping with MAST DOT's initiatives.
Right.
Jim, you had said, that's for me to take pills. Jim, just to remind me, you had said that MAST DOT would want further traffic studies, up-to-date traffic studies. Would that come before or after the design?
It would come early in the design process. So, that part of that effort would be done in the pre-25% and then also in the 25%. 25% submission, so the submissions go pre-25, 25, 75, 100% final PS&amp;E. And each one of those submissions includes multiple things. In the 25% is the completed functional design report that includes all the traffic analysis, new traffic counts, traffic counts that are less than, I think, about two years old, and all that. So, we have a few steps before we even get there. But that analysis will start earlier in the pre-25.
For me, that's important, because I see traffic backed up from Wellfleet to Aspen Road on rainy days in the summer, on some major Saturday, heading north, major Saturday changeover and so forth, because it's going from two, from four lanes to two lanes, and we would drop that back to brackets. So, it's just, it'd be interesting to see what those are.
Yes.
But the issue, the issue as you travel is, I think, for drivers who aren't familiar with our roads, and we have a lot of those, you're going up a lane, then they're reducing a lane, then you go up a lane again, then it's reduced again. And there are little signs that say the road is being reduced, but only we know.
Right, yes.
And so, everyone sort of rushes to those points. So, I don't know. I think the key is getting those left and right turn lanes so that this flow...
Getting people out of the...
Yeah.
I was going to say, and then you have a left turn vehicle stuck in the middle of it.
Yes, yeah. I know, turning, turning left on a Saturday, you look in your rearview mirror to see if you're going to hit the...
Hold your back.
If you're in a, if you're in a one-lane stream, then you just drive slower, really. That's all that happens.
I agree. I agree. It wasn't negative. I was just wanting to...
Okay, just checking.
Important to look at the traffic flows to make, just make sure.
Because the goal, too, is not to increase traffic on the side roads.
So, I had the unfortunate experience of driving to Wellfleet on Friday afternoon. Sorry.
And this weekend was exceptional.
Oh, my God. I have never seen so many cars on absolutely every single road. But it was like, yeah, you can blow through Eastham, which is what people do, and that part by tee time was clear. It had a handful of cars, and then everyone gets stuck at the merge. And all I could think about was like your last presentation. I was like, oh, if this all like slowed down just like a little bit, it would give people less of a cluster when they try and merge. And I would say, since I'm already talking, we should go for the one that we want, because it's going to make our redevelopment of that whole area look so much nicer. And we've put so much time, and we're going to put more time and money into making that area look good, and it's really going to be, I think, a really wonderful redevelopment after, afterward, that we're going to look back on and be like, thank God we did this. This is such an improvement. It looks so much nicer. And so, you know, once it's, once we have all the other pieces in place and the thing is built, and it's been there for a while, and the trees grow, the $1 million will not seem like a big deal in maybe like 20 years. So, I, I think we should, we should go for it. We have to pay for the, the design either way, and then hopefully, the state pays for the rest of it, because it's their road.
And they have touched now with Wellfleet and the Orleans Rotary, every other piece except Eastham.
Well, I, the other part...
That should help us.
The other part of my crazy drive up to Wellfleet is I, at some point, had a bicyclist going as fast as I was, and then at some point went directly behind my car in the middle of the lane. And that was after three dirt bikes pulled out of somewhere else right before Marconi and drove up the side in Wellfleet. So, you know, it was, it was a great drive. It's so good. I'm never leaving my house on the fourth of July again. Yeah. Same mistake, yeah.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Jim, how does the potential of running sewer lines down Route 6 as part of a wastewater project impact the state's evaluation of getting something on the tip? Because they have a moratorium on construction of roadworks once you've dug up for water and sewer.
Yes, so...
So, in other words, could we line it up that this stuff could happen together?
You could.
It's not likely.
No, no, you actually could. I'm just thinking about it. So, if that work, typically, what MAST DOT does when it comes to utility work, is if you were to include that work as non-participating, it would be bid as part of this project ultimately, which also means it has to be submitted to MAST DOT for review, too. But, but the benefit is that when it comes to patching and things like that, the town, I mean, there would be a savings, a more efficient process.
And we just did that for Wellfleet.
And I think in Yarmouth, I don't know the end result of it now, when they actually did the work, but when we were planning the work in Yarmouth, Route 28 is a state road, is the same thing, and the planning of that was somewhere in order magnitude of like a $5 million savings to coordinate the work with DOT, improvements with the utilities.
Yes, yeah. This is a TIP project we're working on right now, that we're trying to align that up. So, yes, it's, they're typically open to that.
Well, that would accelerate things a little bit.
So, when is this MAST DOT meeting?
Good question. So, it hasn't been scheduled yet. We wanted to have tonight's meeting first. We would like to follow up with Cape Cod Commission and then MAST DOT. We would recommend, obviously, town representation there. Hopefully, it's an in-person meeting would be great. And get all the, everybody at this table together can meet at any time now.
Okay.
So, within the next month or two, depending on availability and vacation schedules, that would be, that'd be great.
Awesome. Can I also... Yeah, I think we have to, should pick the preferred or...
Alternative B.
Yeah, whichever, whichever is preferred by people that know what they're talking about.
I'd go with our chiefs.
Yeah. If, I think, right, if the public safety approves of the preferred methods, that's definitely good enough for me.
You, too.
I'm getting nods, so I don't think we need to vote.
Great.
I will say, I appreciate the buffer for bike lanes, because I feel like I see too many things on the internet where people are like, this bike lane would be great if there wasn't just non-stop cars next to it, so...
It's not comfortable.
It's not comfortable, no. It's super scary, so...
I agree, definitely. So, yeah, that sounds good.
Thank you very much, Jim.
No problem.
Yeah, thank you.
The other part would be to, pending the outcome of that meeting with MAST DOT, would be to start with the project initiation process with MAST DOT to get it on the tip, depending on what direction the...
Do we need, does that go through the MPO or is...
It does, but the town sets it up, again, where I want to meet with, we should meet with Cape Cod Commission as well to fill them in on this, and they've been great so far, and as always, they are. They're wonderful. So, yeah, that would be awesome to touch base with them on that.
Well, just, you know, I guess, set the meetings and let us know.
Sounds good.
And those of us who can will try to...
I will note for future agendas, though, I don't think we can ever talk about roadways in half an hour.
Well, these are only suggestions.
Well, they...
Sometimes we can.
What time is it? Oh, geez.
Did I go over?
Yes, it's okay, sorry.
You didn't have a limit. We asked you a lot of questions.
It was lots of interaction.
Yeah.
Well, and we're into it, so like, I knew, I knew.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
And if you could send somebody the slides, Kayla or Jackie.
Absolutely. We'll do, yes.
We can blow them up and see the little details.
Put them on the website somewhere, maybe?
Yeah, we're going to talk about that with you, and we're going to do a proj, Kayla's going to do a project website, so we'll have updates all in one place.
I saw the little, the beginning of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Jim. All right, we'll move on. Lori Barr, HR Director for the Personnel Code.
Hi.
It is my annual visit to ask you to approve the Personnel Code. We have very minimal changes this year. We try to just be more efficient with how we do things and clear things up. So, this year, it came to our attention that liquidation of comp time was not consistent with other unions, and we try to be consistent with the unions. So, that's the first change, so that's on the first page seven, and the second page seven. I just noticed that there's two page sevens. So, the first page seven talks about compensatory time must be liquidated promptly with the approval of the supervisor. It gets very technical. You have it in your packet. And then, if you scroll down, one, two, three, four, five, six more pages, it actually talks about personal time. And unfortunately, there, it still says compensatory time. It should say personal time, but it's the same, just clarifying that personal time should be used by June 30th every year.
So, it would say, in all cases, personal time off, maybe?
Correct. So, that was my error. And then, the last piece of the Personnel Code is every year, we ask you to approve the pay table for the non-union employees. So, in the appendix, the very first appendix, Appendix 1, is the pay table for FY '25, which is, was effective or will be effective July 1, 2024. We haven't gotten through that period yet, so we still have the time for you to adopt this or not, and we can still make changes, so, but please don't.
Yeah, please don't. All the money was approved at town meeting.
Everything was approved at town meeting. We are good to go.
We're good to go.
Although Rich just turned on his mic, so now I'm...
Okay. Yeah, we're good to go.
Do you have anything to add, Rich?
I have a question.
Suzanne?
It is a, so you have steps, and they go up to 10. And then you have grades.
You have grades.
And you have grades. And then you have the longevity.
Kicker.
I don't know, bonus maybe isn't the word, longevity, where is it? Stay pin? Which I thought was nice. And so, do you go through like the reclassification process every so often so that you can, the wages make sense over time? Because if you worked in the same place for like 15 years, and maybe you stepped out, but if you were to like leave the position and we would have to hire somebody new, right? It would probably be at a higher rate.
Well, the, the way the plan works, it accommodates for that, right? Because we add a two, I think it's a 2% COLA this year, plus the differential between steps.
Let me just, the base of your question, I think, Suzanne, is for the first time in a number of years, the Personnel Code step and grade schedule mirrors our Eastham Employee Association's union. So there's similar employees doing similar work, so we wanted to align them.
Right.
And so, when we, every third year, when we're doing collective bargaining with each of our unions, we are reevaluating where we fall as far as a classification-type study and pay rates for different positions.
Okay.
And that's, you know, how we form the basis of our negotiations with the union. And then, in this case, which is not uncommon for most towns, is our Personnel Code typically is gonna mirror that union. Unless there's a compelling reason to have something different.
Okay, so it gets looked at.
So the steps, the steps happen. Steps one through 10 automatically on July 1. And then each year, which is why this comes in front of you, we apply a cost of living adjustment to it as well.
Right.
And so, these are two and a half percent steps. And the COLA for this year is 2%, which is the same as our Eastham Employees Association union is getting as well.
Okay.
So, in that case, we, in the past, prior to my time being here, this Personnel Code schedule was approved at the time that the union contract was approved. And we went to this annual update and annual approval salary tables, just in case, because this is an area where we have an opportunity to do something different if circumstances dictated that we did something different, right?
Okay.
So you get an annual bite at the apple instead of every three years.
Okay, all right.
And then even deeper, past practice has been that the Employees Association, so one of our unions wrote into their contract, they would like to see us do a full reclassification every 10 years. So that's something that they request every few years and.
Okay, okay, just, you know, it's.
And we usually do it for as, as much of the union coverage as we can.
Not shown here, just for everyone's information, we also have a actual formal classification plan, which identifies the, the different grades and why a position gets graded to that level of grade. And provides for the differentials between grades and, you know, all the things. Basically, it's the details of how you develop a Personnel Code. So we have a lot of documentation on how we, you know, how we evaluate jobs and job descriptions and that type of thing.
Okay, sweet, awesome.
Lori, do you need a vote or just a signature, or both?
We usually just do a vote.
Okay. Anyone have any more questions, or? All right, go ahead, Jerry, sorry.
That's all right, I move, we accept the changes proposed by Lori on the two-page sevens with the correction of compensatory to personnel time and to accept the step pay schedule as presented in the appendix.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Love when everybody's here, we don't have to do roll call. All right, administrative matters. Aquaculture site transfer and driving applications. Thank you, Devin, for sitting through. Well, it was rather interesting.
It was pretty interesting, actually, I learned quite a bit. Yeah, so we're just requesting a couple of driving applications. There is one new person who is also the person that's getting the aquaculture license transferred to him. And then as well as one other person who's just an authorized worker. So that's the first thing that we're asking for approval for.
Okay.
And then the second one is just the aquaculture license transfer. So our department, and I've been working with the state on this, too. We are asking to give him the full acre instead of doing the half acre thing, specifically to avoid a lot of the licensing issues that we're having with the state. I mean, I, I did have it in the memo, which kind of explains, you know, some of the things that we are dealing with currently in our department and with the state. But a lot of it's just propagation issues, coordinate issues. I've corrected propagation permits that have been issued for years on end and the coordinates were wrong. And also just switching coordinates all the time with the DMF and having to consistently do that, things start to not match up. So we kind of, and, yeah, we kind of agreed together that it would probably be best to go forward. And it's also one of the changes, too, that I'm, I, in the future, would like to create with the ADA, just to make it the same as the Nauset Marsh area. Just because you get whatever acre is allotted on the Marsh side. And so it'd be the same for the ADA and the Boat Meadow side.
All right, does anyone have any questions? All right, so we have bickeler access applications for Matthew Campbell, Samuel Carpenteri, Erin Barmer, and Margaret Grimes, who is authorized worker on Crowbar site.
Yep, so moved.
I'll second.
Second, all right, any more discussion? Do we need to list the sites, or is it, okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Are you, are you an aye?
Yes.
Five to zero. Thank you, Devin.
Do we need a separate motion for the transfer?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, transfer of aquaculture license to the waitlist, application for Erin Barmer.
So moved.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Devin.
Thanks, Devin. All right, next, year-end transfers. Rich?
It's not in your packet, because we had to get the latest breaking information as of today with invoices for the end of the year. But I did hand it out to you, it's a memo from me to Jackie. And then there's an attachment, second page to it. But what the memo indicates is transfers we expect to need for the end of the year to cover all, some budget shortfalls. So the first ones are finance committee reserve fund transfers. So we're not asking you to vote on these, but this is more informational. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer that. We are waiting on the last two. The biggest magnitude is elementary schools, additional special education costs. Still finalizing that amount, we hope to have it for tomorrow for the finance committee on Wednesday. That's gonna be in order magnitude of around $100,000 from the reserve fund. And then transfer station waste disposal cost due to the, at the moment, I think it's additional volume that we received over what we've budgeted. So, since the volume has a per-ton disposal cost, if we have more volume than what we budgeted for, the costs will be higher. Likewise, the revenue will be higher as well. But we're not able to take extra revenue and apply it against, so we have to get appropriation. That's probably no more than $25,000, probably quite a bit less. But we're finalizing that by tomorrow. But what we are asked, but those are reserve fund transfers we'll be presenting to the finance committee. What we do need a vote from you on is item number two. And as you recall from prior years, we have a procedure that we undertake at the end of the year, because we do put $490,500 in our operating budget for the family support package purposes. And then, not all of that money is always spent. And so, in honor to, in order to honor the intent of town meeting and the taxpayers that voted in override for that $490 for those specific purposes, we transfer the unspent amounts out of the operating budget to the articles. And the difference being, operating budget closes out and becomes free cash, and articles remain and carry forward. And so we're asking you to transfer the money from the operating budget to the articles of the same purpose. And that's the point of the, of the back page, which kind of shows since inception, the history of the operating budgets, showing that we don't close out any of the operating money. And the transfer's over to the articles and the current balances in those articles.
Excellent.
And the only final point is, we do think we have everything in here. But we're asking you to vote, not specific amounts, but any remaining balances, just in case a final bill comes in in the next couple of days. Your vote will cover anything further.
Okay, so how would you like our motion? Just transfer all unspent family support package funds?
As written there, yeah.
As written.
Second.
All right, any discussion? No, it's all right. No discussion, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero. Thanks, Rich.
Yeah, that's right.
That's fine.
Thanks, Rich.
That was pretty much it, Jamie.
Yeah.
Where are we? Nauset Light Beach Road Plan Signature.
So this is the final plan for our new Nauset Light Beach Road that's now, I don't know, six years old.
It's been around a while.
So we.
It's pre-COVID.
We have had three surveyors work on this, and it's gone back and forth between us and the Seashore for about two and a half years. So we are happy to celebrate this plan, and we would like you to sign it as soon as possible.
Yes.
Do we just have to vote? We need to vote?
Uh, no, you just have to sign it.
Okay.
Okay.
I think it's in here somewhere.
You have to sign the original vellum plan.
Oh, wow. Fancy.
And then that gets filed with the town clerk.
Yes.
I think that's our newest public road.
It's gotta be. All right, paint stewardship legislation. I know you all talked about this some extent. Yeah. And do you want to talk about what we discussed at the agenda setting? Jerry just.
Yeah. Amy and I discussed it at agenda setting, and she had talked with Darren at Eastham Hardware, saying that, you know, he doesn't oppose it, but he doesn't have room to become.
Collector.
Collector, to pull anything in. And I think our thoughts were that, you know, Barnstable County is representing 15 towns as, as signed on for support of it. We still, I, I think that our thoughts were to just let it be. We would need a support nor oppose. And just see what the state does, and if it comes across that they repay a dollar a gallon more.
50 cents.
50 cents a gallon more, whatever, between 50 cents and a dollar more per gallon. And then have collection sites somewhere, hopefully close to Eastham. So be it. But that was, our thoughts, not to sign a letter.
Like to advocate.
But not to reject, not to reject it. So, I mean, I think that that's a way I would like to, it's kind of straddling the fence, I understand. But it's, we're really close to July 31st when this ends anyway.
Yeah.
So I, I think that we, that, that was the thought that we had. Am I pretty much correct, Amy?
That's, that's how I.
But we've.
I think that's a fair compromise.
Kind of the don't ask, don't tell.
Do you guys take comment in the public? About that, I have a question in regards to it.
Okay, hold on, we'll.
There's two specialists here to speak to it that came tonight for that reason.
Oh, okay.
An opportunity to speak to it.
Okay, let's finish up with the board, and then I'll have someone come up and speak to it. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I'm teetering, teetering on the edge of, you know, you know, wanting to send a letter against it. So I think that this is a fair compromise to allow it to proceed as it's going to proceed.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, would you like to come up, either to the table or to the microphone up here and introduce yourself and?
Whomever.
I don't know, I'm out of turn, sorry.
That's okay, no, 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 it's fine.
I've had a long holiday weekend, the end of it, so I brought some notes to kind of help keep me on track. Just by way of context, and thank you for letting me speak briefly. My name is Kalai Pichut, and I work for Barnstable County. I manage the Water Quality and Hazardous Waste Program. And I've worked in that program for the last 20 years. And quite a lot of our waste category is paint. And my mission, if you were to distill it, is to meet the needs of the residents. And the information that I'd like to let you in on is informational only, right? To help you kind of make your decision. There is other, there are other people, I'm sure, online or in the audience that might want to speak as well. Again, this is just informational. So again, I've worked in the program for 20 years, and a lot of the paint questions come up every year, all year, outside of the hazardous waste collection season, which is April through October. And Eastham residents have two opportunities to dispose of paint in a way that makes sense, both for limited capacity, if you were to throw it away, which is one of the ways that folks like the DEP recommend to deal with latex paint, or to use a hazardous waste collection event, which is more for oil-based paints and stains. And I have to let you know that people really are anxious about paint disposal, whether they're selling their home and they can't leave it behind, or they're moving, someone in their family died, and they're looking for ways to dispose of paint that makes sense to not throw it away, to reuse it, or use it for what it was originally manufactured for. And then we also, at Barnstable County Hazardous Materials Program, which is part of the Water Quality and Hazardous Waste Program, we have quite a few businesses that use what we call the V S Q G, or Very Small Quantity Generator Program. And those are small businesses that use a small amount of waste, like paint. And they want to, they generate a small amount of waste, like paint, and they want to dispose of it year-round in a way that makes sense. And I looked at my records for Eastham, and honestly, we don't have a ton of participations from Eastham businesses. I think Brundage Site Work was the last one. But across the Cape, and I work from Provincetown to Bos, not Boston, Warren, we do have a ton of paint generators that want this service, and they want it year-round. So people want to dispose of paint year-round, residents, and they also, small businesses, would love to have a way to dispose of paint. It doesn't cost a ton for the town. Like, when I was looking at the paint numbers, if you were to support or not support this legislation, I was looking at the cost of the household hazardous waste collections. I was looking at the, how many Eastham residents participate, it was 347 last year. But hazardous waste collection events are escalating in cost. And one of the things that I'm really passionate about is sustainability. And one of the ways, the pathways to sustainability for hazardous waste collections would be to entertain a motion for paint disposal that makes sense, not to throw it away in the trash and have it go to a landfill or an incinerator, but to reuse it for what it was originally manufactured for, like I mentioned. Paint legislation in other states allows for easy access for disposal. Like I mentioned, it's convenient, it's year-round, you can dispose of paint outside of the collection schedule for hazardous waste. And I think that's about it. I just really want to make sure that you're really weighing out no action or negative action. Because I answer the phone every single time someone calls me, I have an 800 number, and I've been doing it for 20 years. And the number one call I get into my 800 number is paint disposal. And a lot of it comes from small businesses. So this could impact both the residents and small businesses, like I mentioned. So I just want to make sure that you are really clear on what your position, how it impacted your residents and small businesses. I know, because I work with them and have for many years. And I don't, not advocating for paint stewardship or not, I'm just letting you know that it does make a difference.
Has there been any thought to incorporate latex into the hazardous waste collection?
Yes, latex is the bane of my existence. But latex is, like Tanya Cubel is here from Recolor Paint. We have had a working relationship for about a decade and a half, talking about paint care. And she, she takes back latex paint within Massachusetts, re-blends it and sells it. I'm not a walking advertisement for Recolor, but I've worked with them for many years, and I've seen the difference that they make with the latex or water-based paints. So it can be latex or acrylic. On the hazardous waste paints, like marine paint, bottom paint, et cetera, aerosols, which are now universal waste, that's, those would not be taken through paint care. But water-based, oil-based paints, like deck stains and stuff, would be taken, yeah. So latex is huge. People are desperate for a way to get rid of latex paint.
What, what, what's your opinion on, not opinion, but thought on, like, our businesses, you know, in town that sell paint, then having to take this back? Is there any provision for them to be able to store this or somehow get rid of it?
Yeah, so I'm not a, an ex. So I'm not an expert in paint care. I've recognized that usually it's a pallet size for smaller businesses. It gets a lot of foot traffic in, so people drop off legacy paint. That's the paint that's been sitting around in their house or their barn or whatever for a long, long time. They can bring that all in year round. And when you have that pallet picked up, then there's room for more. And then the cost of the hazardous waste collections that are paint, both oil-based and latex, would be covered by paint care. So looking at that cost is about $13,000 a year. It's not that much, but, you know, you could use it for something else, especially to try to meet the cost of the escalating hazardous waste costs.
Okay. And that, was it 50 cents a gallon?
It varies. Again, I'm not a... I'm not an expert on it, you know. So the difference with that...
But I mean, what would be charged?
Yeah. Maybe talking with someone from, I don't know, Tanya, do you know?
Sorry. What was the question?
Just, just what? Is it 50 cents a gallon?
It varies from 65 to 85 cents a gallon, usually.
Whereas the hazardous waste collections costs are covered by all taxpayers in Eastham, regardless if they use those events.
Right.
We had 347 last year, Eastham residents come, but everybody in Eastham paid for those 347 people to come. So, you know, it's a cost benefit, and you really have to weigh it out. I have to say, everyone that calls that 800 number, they want to dispose of gas and paint.
Wow.
So, just something to think about. I don't know if you want to hear from Tanya Keeble.
Can I ask you a question? I'm wondering what small... I'm wondering how businesses dispose of their leftover paint now, because you have a job and maybe you didn't use all the paint, but you purchased it.
A painting company.
Like, even like a painting company. Like, they must have leftover paint, and I'm curious what their disposal methods currently are. I was... I liked the thing about the program that a business could sign up to be their own collection site. So if you did have a paint company or a construction company and you were dealing with this, you could become your own site, which, you know, you have to pay for dumpsters and whatnot anyway, but I'm curious what people do when they want to... Their business, and they have paint.
Yeah. April through October, they can come to a hazardous waste collection and pay, and they pay. We have painting contractors, kitchen design companies, home, like handyman, general contractors. They all dispose of paint. Ace Hardware disposes of paint through my program, Chatham Barzine. Everybody's disposing of paint through hazardous waste if they're a small business. And they pay. And they pay a lot more than 50 cents, 80 cents, a dollar a gallon. It's really expensive. Hazardous waste disposal is really expensive. So they use this program. So then November through March, what do they do with it? They store it. I get super concerned about first responders going into a structure fire when there's burning oil-based paints and marine paints. That's something that I think is really important to think about. So that's called legacy paint, which just sits around and waits for a way to get disposed of. Sometimes people throw it away. That's what, you know... It's a waste category when waste characterization studies are done of waste streams at, like, say, ReWorld, which used to be called Cervantes, MS. So people throw it away, maybe illegally dump it. I don't know.
Did you say that non-paint salespeople or sales locations can become collection sites?
I think you can sign up to be a disposal site if you sell paint or if you... And I could be speaking out of turn, because I don't totally know the answer to that question, but I believe it's pretty loose.
Well, I'm just thinking about, you know, how many stores in Eastham sell paint? And besides Ace Hardware, I can't think of one.
I think we discussed that if we wanted the dump to be a pickup site...
Absolutely.
We could sign the dump up to be a pickup site.
Yeah. You could have a paint shed there where people drop it off and pick it up at no cost to the municipality or the taxpayers. That's exactly... That would be a perfect scenario.
You were referring to the pallet. Well, this could be stored outside?
Mm-hmm. Sure. Well, so during the winter months, if paint is frozen, it becomes nonusable. So you'd want, if you, you know, a different schedule. I don't work for paint care. I'm not totally sure how it all works, but, you know, California and Oregon have paint care, most of the rest of the Northeast, Vermont, Connecticut, Rhode Island, they all have paint care. They figured it out. Luckily, it's a wheel we don't have to invent here.
Information we received last time, Amy, was that the signup was a voluntary thing. You didn't have... Just because you sell it, you don't have to collect it.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
So it doesn't become a hardship for the Ace Hardware people if we just, if we use the dump as a, or the transfer station, rather, as a collection point?
Right. And then again, paint care would pay for the cost of your hazardous waste collection percentage, which was paint, which is about, depending on your... When you drop off in Orleans, as Eastham residents can do, or here in Eastham, it's about 30 to 45% of your waste category that comes into a hazardous waste collection is paint. That would be covered by paint care. Again, informational only.
Do towns ever partner on this thing? I mean, is this in Orleans, Eastham? Is this up for partnership?
Sure. You could cross town lines also.
I mean, we share the hazardous waste collection amongst the...
So you could drive to Barnstable or Born if you wanted to, or wherever, and drop off your paint.
Jamie?
I guess my question, actually, Jackie, so the Eastham taxpayer is already paying for how many hazardous waste days, including our neighboring towns?
One.
But we pay for one, Orleans pays for one.
We pay for one, and we can go to either. But we share them. Right.
You actually pay for both, but you pay for a percentage based on participation, and it turns out to be 50/50.
So we're already paying for those.
Yeah. Our budget is, this past year was $25,000. I don't know what the actual cost was, but that's what we budgeted for.
It's usually like 13 to 15, right?
And the cost is to cover the disposal of, maybe your program... To cover the disposal.
And to bring in all that legacy paint that's just been sitting out there. You know, the EPA says that a household aggregates about 25 gallons of hazardous waste per year, and that's generally paint.
So if we... Could we cut back on that? If we used the transfer station, if we signed up for this program, or we had this program put forth upon us?
It would probably be less that would show up there, is my guess.
It might cost less. I wouldn't want to cut down on the... Since we only do a day, like, we wouldn't want to eliminate the day.
Well, I'm thinking gasoline and things like that would still be part of that day, but the $25,000 might turn into 5,000.
People could drop off any time they wanted to or any time it was open.
Yeah.
But I think we'd have to maybe have a heated spot, it sounds like.
For the winter months.
Yeah. Hold on. Let me ask...
So the reality is, this would be an added cost to the...
Paint buyer.
To the paint buyer, right?
Yeah. It's a...
To the buyer, yes.
Right. Because we're still going to maintain our hazardous waste days.
Other taxpayers in town, wouldn't it be less?
Right. It's less overall.
Less overall.
It's like buying motor oil.
I'm just, I'm just, hold on.
That's all right.
This is all like guessing, right? We're guessing that there's going to be less people...
Like, the fee would be buying...
1% of the cost of the gallon of paint. It's basically what it is.
No, no, I'm... So there would be, we're still paying the same amount for our taxes for this hazardous waste day that we have. That won't change.
It would change if they collected less paint.
In theory, which we don't know.
It would go down because...
Which I understand that in theory it would go down, but we don't know that. That's not a fact, and I'm not going to tell people who vote for us that it is. I'm not going to tell them that that number's going to go down. What I'm going to tell them is that their cost, when they go to the hardware store, is going to go up. That's a reality. Like, I just... I'm fine letting it be and letting the state make their decision. I am not fine endorsing something that creates added cost for our residents right now. I wish we had this much discussion on the housing transfer bill, because that's something that matters. This is another small fee that we're going to be asking people to pay, and I'm not okay with that. There's... You're not going to convince me.
No. But however, taking paint out of the waste stream is important.
Right. And we are doing that.
Well, hazardous waste doesn't take latex.
Right. And how many people are still using latex paint right now?
Most paints are latex.
Everybody, and I am.
In fact, oil is becoming a thing of the past.
But are they not using it and letting it harden? And are they not using it and use... There's different methods for hardening latex, and there's hazardous waste days already. I just can't get behind a program that creates an added cost and isn't going to be used in Eastham.
I want to make sure I understand this. In principle, I agree with Jamie. If you look at the numbers on this, you know, you typically pay... If you go to Home Depot, you can buy a gallon of paint for 30 bucks. But you go to Ace Hardware, you're going to buy, spend more, it's $65 a gallon. It's 65 cents for the... You're going to add 65 cents, you're going to add 1% to this. So it's essentially de minimis, and has the opportunity to take this waste stream out of here, you know, just get rid of it in a different way. And it has the opportunity for lowering the cost of the hazardous waste day. We don't know that, to your point. It's a guess. But I, in my opinion, you know, it's worth 1% to take that paint out of that, out of the stream going to the transfer station and just, you know, as part of the hazardous waste collection, I think. I would predict that it's going to save us money in the long run.
Well, and it's not really, if it passes, it's not really up to us whether to collect it or not.
Right.
We don't get to vote on whether or not to collect it.
Right.
So staying neutral at this point isn't saying yea or nay on it. Correct? Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to give you information.
Do you know where it is in the process?
I think it was in the House Ways and Means, but I don't follow it, and I'm just giving information.
So it's not out of any committees yet?
Yeah. I'm just giving information. The data shows that people drop off paint, and I'm always looking for ways to divert what people drop off into ways that makes the most amount of sense. So, there's some information.
I mean, we could also, if you... At your pleasure, we can add latex paint collection to the stuff we take at the transfer station to move along, you know, if that makes a difference to people. I don't know what the cost would be, and we can check that out, but... Or participating voluntarily in a program that would collect it.
Hold on. Jamie still had her hand up.
Yeah. I guess my frustration comes with the fact that being on this board and knowing what our role is for the taxpayers, right? I feel like, sometimes I just feel like we're doing a disservice when we keep adding these things. We just passed at town meeting a more restrictive building code. That's going to cost more money, and it is. And now we want to add just another couple dollars here and another couple dollars here, but we're not dedicating the same amount of energy right now to offsetting these things. And that's a disservice. Like, the amount of time we've spent on this topic and the things that we could be talking about and doing right now, it's just, that's why I think I get so upset. And, you know, I apologize for that, but it makes me like crazy that this is something that's taking priority over some of the topics that we should be talking about right now.
True, but I think we need to vet things that come by us, just to make sure we understand what they're about. And I hear you, Jamie.
Yeah.
I... One of the other things of the program that I think is useful is that it gets recycled, and I feel like people in our community really value recycling.
They do.
When weighed with, should I throw this out or can I repurpose it? And it is another one of those, if you use the thing, you pay the service fee on it. And I'm kind of a fan generally of that model. I also was like, oh, bring the latex paint to hazardous waste day. And then they were like, we don't take it. And then I was like, all right, it's going to keep sitting there then, because I don't know what to do with it.
Yeah.
Well, that might be something even easy we could do at hazardous waste day. Have a little piece of paper, you give them, this is how you get rid of latex paint.
We do, yeah.
Pour it in a box, let it dry out, and then you throw it away.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that still is like added weight, you know? Because I don't know how much weight it is, but like, I don't know how much it weighs once it's dried and like in the can and so on and so forth. I don't know how much paint there is, but...
All right. Would you like to say just a couple things?
Oh, but come on.
You have to come up to the microphone.
Time is way more out.
I know, Jamie. Sorry.
You have to vote tonight.
I mean, I didn't want to type that anymore time. I understand.
The paint care program is in multiple states, and they have taken about 3 million. In California, for example, which is one of the first that was passed, they've taken over 3 million gallons of paint, and that's done by weight. They've saved the taxpayer millions of dollars through this program. They capture a very high percentage, I can't give you that percentage in front of me right now, a very high percentage of the waste stream that's out there, particularly the latex paint that currently in a lot of areas, especially in Massachusetts, only 12% of latex is collected. I am from a paint recycling business that's been in the business since 2009. We've partnered with the Mass DEP and do collect latex paint in various places. Once on the Cape a year, we do do this and collect about 20,000 pounds of latex paint, some of which comes from latex. There's 73 million gallons wasted every year. That's 10% of what's been bought, and it's a problem. And it will be eventual... It will hit our back pockets as soon as we start opening those doors and collecting it there in everybody, every household right now, not to mention like Kaliapi did, you know, the oil-based paint that is actually a hazard if something does happen in a house. But what I bring to the table is that paint care allows this to be responsibly handled. It's not just in your landfill, ending up in your landfill. It's recycled. There are eight recyclers in North America that take this paint and reuse it, and they have a sustainability initiative where they take it and they make another paint product with it. I make recycled content paint. Last year, I had an opportunity to sell 82,000 gallons through Walmart. I had to go out of state to collect it, because Massachusetts just doesn't have the infrastructure to do so. And I continue to do that as our business tries to grow. We go out of state to do it. I feel very strongly about this piece of legislation, and I think ultimately it will be a cost saving that you will receive down the road. I can guarantee it. I would love the opportunity, I know you don't want to spend time right now, to give you numbers on what the proposals would be for cost savings down the road.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Apparently, we had someone online with their hand up.
I'm going to promote them to allow them to talk, so...
And if you could introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Juanita Traybert. I am the Chair of the Product Stewardship Council of Massachusetts. And we are in staunch support of the paint recycling bill. We are leading an advocacy group to try and get this passed. It will be up for a vote as part of the Economic Development Bill this Thursday. And we have been gathering support from municipalities because that is the mission of the Product Stewardship Council is to benefit municipal governments through product stewardship legislation, which this paint recycling program falls under. All of our surrounding states except New Hampshire have this law in place. Connecticut has been benefiting from this law for over ten years. And they have done studies estimating that they have saved taxpayers over two million dollars annually from, from that program. And we're asking for the support from individual municipalities, even though we have a letter of support from Barnstable County, because the weight of individual municipal support is, it carries more weight than the county government in the eyes of the legislature. So that's why we're seeking your support in addition to having support from Barnstable County.
Okay, well, thank you very much. All right, so we seem a little split on the board as to how.
I thought the original suggestion was.
Well, you're right.
Great.
To, right, that's, I was getting there, Jamie.
Yeah.
That we kind of fall on different sides. So at this point, we thought the compromise, good compromise was to not send a letter of support, but also not send a letter against at this time. All right, everybody?
Can we vote to make that decision then?
Sure.
Okay.
You want to make the motion?
So I'll make a motion to have a non-action on the topic of the paint stewardship legislation letter.
I have discussions, I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
So three to two, no action. Okay. All right, thank you, everybody. Thanks for sticking around. All right, committee resignations. Russ French from the Finance Committee.
Will we accept the resignation of Russ French from the Finance Committee?
Okay, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I saw the FinCom wrote an ice letter to him, but I think we should send one to him. He's been, he's been on a long time.
A long, long time.
Been on a long time.
Are, oh, all in favor? Did I say all?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, you did, okay. Sorry. Okay, committee appointments postponed from the last meeting. Michael Vion, Planning Board, Andrew Scott, Board of Assessors, Janet Benjamin's Conservation Commission, Joanne Cossett, Conservation Commission, and Gregory Douglas, Conservation Commission. Kayla, can I come, a couple comments?
I'll second and then discussion.
Okay. Yes.
Did, did you move it?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to highlight the Conservation Commission members that are up for reappointment. Janet has been on the board, on the commission for quite some time, and she has the M A C C certificate, which is kind of a lengthy training. And then Joanne is a Foreign Service Officer with the State Department and has school age kids, which is nice to have some people with school age kids on our commissions. And then Greg is a chemical engineer with a PhD in oceanog-ry chemistry. And has worked in the aftermath of oil spills. And Greg has also completed some of the M A C C training. And I would just like to, a little pitch for the Conservation Commission is that they meet twice a month. They're one of our busiest, busiest boards, and we appreciate the time that people put into serving on it because it's, it's a fairly, it's a busy, busy board. It's a busy board, yeah.
Jerry?
You know, I, I'm the individual who probably spearheaded delaying the, those three appointments just concerning one issue with a, a potential quote illegal, close quote, Eastham bylaw and enforcing it, and they've, they're not enforcing it.
It's been settled.
It's all settled, so I'm all in favor of them, and I really want to give a pitch for Michelle, because she went to Wesleyan University. All right, Michelle.
There you go.
All right, any more discussion on the five appointments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, five to zero. All right, committee appointments. Marie Forgem, Historical Commission, Jay Camp, Historical Commission, Kevin Gatlin, Planning Board, Gargana Alex Siva, is that close enough? Sorry. Recreation Commission, Eileen Sebold, Old Town Center, Ellen Greer, Human Services, Michelle Vion, Strategic Planning, Bonnie Nwendel, Visitors Tourism Board, and Steve Galrich, Sixteen Fifty-One Forest Advisory.
These are appointments that the committees have the authority to appoint, so this is informational?
There's both.
No, no, these are, there's applications in there.
Well, these are new ones.
Kevin, I think, is moving into an, from alternate to.
From alternate to a full, but these are all, yeah, full.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Misread.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any more discussion?
I got to interview Michelle Vion, and she's lovely, very bright, has a very diverse background, interdisciplinary, I think is the word I'm looking for. And she made a really wonderful analogy of what's needed to do strategic planning, and I was like, that's, you understand the assignment, so really excited to have her on the planning board and on strategic planning as well.
Just one more comment. I had the opportunity to work with Kevin for two years on the Zoning Task Force. And given his, moving on to the plant, planning board as a voting member is a great opportunity. He's one of the, one of the good guys that, that we would want enforcing those regs.
That's great. All right, anyone else? All right, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero.
Thank you for being here.
You're on. All right, next we have licensing. Dell Enterprises, Inc., doing business as the Lobster Shanty. We have the common victular and all alcohol on premise. So the Lobster Shanty last week, week and a half ago, paid all their back taxes.
And their water bill.
And their water bill. Backwater bill. And they were approved by the Board of, or Health Inspe, passed their health inspection, I believe, last Wednesday.
Yes.
Wednesday.
And Susan Barker issued them a thirty-day to, just to catch.
Intingent upon our.
Your approval.
That was going to be my question. Because they were open. Because they're open, and we did not approve their.
Well, right, the Board of Health permission does supersede yours.
It's just they, they can't serve alcohol until we approve this.
That's right.
And they have not been.
And they have not been. All right, so I need a motion.
Out of all the i's, crossed all the t's, so I, I move we grant an all-alcohol license and a common victular license to Dell Enterprises Incorporated, doing business as Seashore Lobster Shanty.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five to zero.
Thank you.
They should have their alcohol license tomorrow.
It's amazing. How fast you are.
All right, Town Managers' Report.
So, I just wanted to follow up. The community fund legislation is on the brink of passage. We have to get it through this legislative period, and we're hoping it will be. On a better, even better note, we have our first donation to the Eastham Community Fund by the Part-Time Resident Taxpayers Association, who voted Saturday to give us two thousand dollars to open up that fund. And I think, you know, Amy and I went with Chief Bohan on Saturday. It was a really, actually very informative time. I thought we were well-received. I wasn't expecting the positive reception that we got, so we were very happy, and.
Learned something interesting there. The Lower Cape Outreach was there, and they've been a business for forty years, which shocked me.
Seems amazing.
And then their first year, in nineteen eighty-four, they gave out forty-five hundred dollars. The last several years, three million dollars. So they have really grown.
Really grown.
Yeah.
Huge.
Pretty amazing organization.
And I don't think there's any other big news. I gave quite a few updates. Obviously, the appointment of Deputy Chief Lisa Albino as our new Fire Chief on September sixth. We've received very good response to that appointment too, which is always nice. They don't need to agree with us, but it's nice when they do. And the offshore wind update, I just wanted to give you some further dates with that. And that's about it.
On that note, just wanted to let you know the Seashore did send comments before that July first deadline.
Oh, good.
Do we know what they were?
I'll see if I, yes, they're concerned with, you know, the view shed, because they are, they would be visible from.
Highly visible.
I, oh, highly visible.
From the shoreline.
I got another email from Francie Williams with some deep concern over the lack of local involvement allowed regarding this project, and I think we all probably have some concern over like, we weren't. I, yeah, I mean, I feel like this just like popped up and we weren't like super notified.
So they still, it did, yeah. They still have to go through so much environmental review.
Right, and.
It's not like this is the final thing.
Yeah, and I just, why, why are they floating?
We need to track it.
Because it's too deep to.
I just, I, I mean, I never, I never thought I would like be this person. And I can't tell if it's just like me being a nimpy or not about it, but I'm like, is that really the like most efficient way to get us some more green energy is to do floating turbines? There.
It's going to be challenging.
And, you know, it's, I was like, I looked at your, the, if people are interested, go look at our packet, because it has that whole presentation.
Yeah, I'm sure there, there'll be, you know, extensive study on, because there are, you're right, floating, how they'll be attached. Now, they're not going to be attached with, you know, little lines that things can get tangled in. These are going to be steel cables, I imagine, that will be anchored to the bottom, but yeah, who knows?
It's far, it's just a lot, and I was like, is that the fishing grounds that people particularly like or not? And the map wasn't.
No, it's not.
Wasn't super clear on that. I was like, is that where?
I think the environmental reviews will be extensive, and that's going to be a time when, when things will come to light if there's.
And then they have to run a cable.
Right.
And it just.
And the, the Seashore, right, all the way to either Salem or Plymouth, because the Cape Cod National Seashore will not let them bring cables.
And, yeah, I just, I don't know. We are trying so many ways to get more energy, and I really wish we looked at more ways to reduce our use, and that doesn't, I'm like, for all of the effort you're putting into getting, putting floating wind turbines there, could I get some trains? I would love some.
Yeah.
Public trains.
Well, that's, well, Kayla and I will put this on our agenda to keep up with this, you know, permitting as it goes forward.
Is back on track. They're going to be keeping their eye on it. And, you know, again, there's a lot more review that has to happen, so we'll find, get, I think, a lot of answers to these questions as to why they want them a certain way and what the impacts of that is, because they're going to be like, what, fifteen hundred feet tall or some crazy?
It's massive.
Massive.
Yeah, I just, it's.
I know, I'm, I'm torn too, you know?
You're like, this is a lot of effort to like even figure it out for them to then be like, no, I guess because of the whales and the fishing.
They pay for it. I mean, so.
No, I know, but it's just, it's like the sunk, is it the sunk cost thing of like, well, we, we did this much planning.
Oh, right, no, I hear you.
And it's an energy company, and the thing with that is you went from oil companies doing oil, and now they're also doing green energy, so you still have that dilemma of an energy company trying to make money, and so I, I'm.
I hear you.
Yeah, I sent these ones, I sent this one.
They're still there.
Oh, can you?
Is that it?
Um, your, no, your report, which.
Yeah, that's what she was.
You, if you could make a little spot on the website for your report of the town manager to just live, so we could send people to it. I really, I really like your reports, and I think they answer a lot of people's questions. And they give like a status update of things that people are curious about, such as the dangerous dog hearing update is in there.
Yeah, hopefully by Friday we'll have an answer.
So, that's my shameless pitch to.
Jamie? And I, I don't know if we're on, I wanted to mention, kind of going back to the Housing Bond Bill, Jackie's letter that she wrote was fantastic. I wanted to mention that that did get written, and I didn't know if you wanted to still send a version of it or not.
Even though it didn't make it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, why not?
Yeah.
Yes.
Or we, even if we just send it to Julian and let him know that when he needs us, we're standing by.
Right, yeah, because I think that this, yeah, it would be helpful, yeah. Thanks, Jac. Because he's been doing a lot of advocating for it, so.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
With that as well, so I would send it to him.
We have no minutes. Can we skip upcoming agenda items unless we have something glaring? I guess you, you updated the community fund, so.
Yep.
Unless someone has something really pressing for future agenda items. You can always let Jerry and I know before next Wednesday, I guess.
And if you call either Kayla or myself, we can put the topic on the board. We keep a board. That's how we present an agenda to these guys to review. So if you want something, we can stick it on the board and then it'll at least.
We'll be talking about it at the agenda setting, yeah.
Can I also thank staff for taking care of our used car lot that we had momentarily and ask residents to not.
Can, because.
Not, not leave their vehicles there. Boats, vehicles.
We did have an application over the weekend for them to use it for wedding parking. We did approve that, so if anyone saw a bunch of cars there, that was approved. But Justin got rid of all the other vehicles.
And actually, our police called and threatened people over the weekend. So everyone was called and told they had to remove the vehicle by four o'clock, the boat, the RV, the camper. Two of them were from Turo, and so Turo Police sent someone to their home to say, you have to do it. So the police really
Only one Eastham person.
Really helped us on this one, and so we just have to decide now in the future, should we put up a gate overnight? What do we need to do to?
Some signage. Unauthorized vehicles will be towed.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fine.
And if they're authorized for a wedding thing.
And no overnight.
Maybe we give them a little thing.
Overnight parking.
We would need like four gates, though.
Yeah, that's why.
I think that's my money.
Yeah, no sign.
And if the signs there and they do it, they get towed, they'll get the message.
Yeah.
It would be very expensive to tow an RV on Fourth of July weekend. I can't even imagine how much that would cost, so, yes.
I had a tow Fourth of July weekend thirty, over thirty years ago, in Oregon, out in eastern Oregon. Thank God I had AAA.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
The tow truck operator said it was about a four-hundred-and-fifty-dollar tow, and this was thirty-some years ago.
Wow.
So.
It's a lot.
Had AAA ever since.
Are you looking for a motion to adjourn? I move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are.